Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, September 28th, 2016. At this time, would you please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of James A. Bush, late of Dayton, and to extend our condolences to his family. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following minutes be approved. Executive session, March 29th. Executive session, May 10th. Executive session, May 17th. Executive session, February 23rd, 2016. On all of them.
And I'd like to second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 13A-17 in the amount of $85,708.67 payroll. Warrant 13B-17 in the amount of $20,031.18. And warrant 13C-17 in the amount of $91,311.96. Both accounts payable dated, all dated September 28th, be approved.
Second that.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. Bear with us as we put out John Hancock's. Next, under Correspondence, we have a single piece of correspondence from Pro Home regarding programs and services provided to the town of Dayton. I'd like to read this. This comes from Pro Home, located in Taunton, Massachusetts. "Dear community officials, in an effort to bring greater awareness to the programs and services that Pro Home provides to your community, I want to take this opportunity to provide you with a brief update on Pro Home's home program for fiscal year 2016." It should be '17. This past year, Pro Home was awarded $90,000 to be allocated to eligible first-time home buyers within our 13 community service area. During FY '16, three clients of Pro Home purchased their first home in Dayton and received a total of $17,961.18 in grant assistance towards down payment and closing costs. Also during FY '16, we have counseled the five clients in foreclosure in an effort to bring their mortgage current. For more information on Pro Home, we encourage all residents to visit us on the web at www.prohomeinc.org or by calling us at (508) 821-2514. And I'll repeat that. The website is www.prohomeinc.org, and the telephone number is (508) 821-2514.
This is the committee that I went to earlier. And the reason why they're saying fiscal year '16, they had $90,000 they had to use that was allocated to them in FY '16.
Okay.
So, they have FY '17 money, but they had to use up to '16 or it would have to be returned. So, that's why they did that.
Excellent.
Yep. They'll go up to, on a first-time home, to qualifying buyers, they will allow up to $10,000, which would include closing costs. So, that's good.
Next on the agenda, announcements. Got off here with trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call (508) 669-6431 for more information. Meetings for the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and the Police Station Building Committee are now being posted to you, to you two, under the name Town of Dayton Meetings. There is currently an informational meeting of the Dayton Police Station Building Committee scheduled for this coming October 4th at the Dayton Middle School, 7:00 PM. Again, the Dayton Police Station Building Committee has scheduled a public forum on the updated police station concept that will be held October 4th at the Dayton Middle School at 7:00 PM. The Historical Commission is looking for volunteers. Please come into the Selectmen's office to fill out a volunteer form if you are interested. The Fall Town Meeting will be Thursday, October 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Dayton Middle School. There are currently unused items located at the transfer station available to the highest bidder. Please submit written bids for these items at the Selectmen's office on or before September 29th, which is tomorrow, at 3:00 PM. Some of the items are as follows: a Dayton portable generator, a John DeLwan Moa model L111A, and an arc welder. And I do believe we have one more announcement here concerning early voting for the state election. The state election is on November 8th this year. Early voting will be held in the town of Dayton the week of October 24th and the week of October 31st. This early voting will be Monday through Thursday. You can vote at the upper level, which is up here, on Monday through Thursday. I'll say Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, 7:30 to 4:30, both weeks, October 31st through November 30th, the second week. The Wednesdays, the hours are 7:30 till 8:00 PM, and that being because we have our Board of Selectmen's meeting, and, you know, we will be open. So, it'll be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 7:30 to 4:30. Wednesday, 7:30 to 4:30 for the weeks of October 24th and the week of October 31st. Under Old Business, Review Discuss an Act on Mr. Sean Blanchett's Eagle Scout Project Update. Welcome.
Hi. So, I have a couple pictures showing my project, like, my progress. And since we last met, I have added vegetation to my project, including crawling junipers around it. I've added three trees. Something that's not in those pictures that has been added is the picnic tables that happened after I took the pictures.
Three.
Yeah. Two picnic tables were installed and three trees, along with flowers around the stone where the plaque will be placed.
Where'd you get the tall one? Is this from the old bridge?
Um...
Did you get that from Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Those came off the bridge.
Those were part of the supports of the old Berkeley-Dayton Bridge, these tall ones. And I think some of these may have been, I think any stone you got from Tom, unless it was field stone, if it was granite, came from the bridge.
It's cool.
We save everything.
Very nice.
Recycling. Yeah, it really looks good.
Nice job. Nice job.
Yeah. All I have left is, I need to put stone dust all around the existing area, and some mulch around the tree beds and the crawling juniper beds.
So, in these pictures, where are the picnic tables going to go? Are they in this area that's open?
If you can see, there's like a metal rod that's standing up.
Yeah?
That's where one of them will be.
The black rod, okay.
Yeah, and the cement circle is where the other one is.
Oh, okay. Are these going to turn into trees?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it birch?
Um, I don't know.
Hard to tell.
A maple.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's a big area. Good-sized area.
Yeah.
That looks good. So, this is your mid-project report, so the next time you come in, it'll all be done?
Yep.
Very good.
Excellent job. Excellent.
Those round rocks look like seats, don't they?
They do. Have you had a lot of help?
Yeah.
Very good job. When do you think you'll be finishing up?
Very soon. Yeah. Within the next month.
Good. Very good. Just let us know.
I will.
So, how long will it take after you do your, get everything done, and you've come in for the final time, that you submit your paperwork? How long is it going to take to find out, make sure?
It depends, because there are only two sessions a year for the Board of Review, and it could either be in, like, October, November, or it could be in June.
Oh, okay.
Depends. But, yeah.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Under New Business, first on the agenda, Review Discuss an Act on a Sewer Commissioner's Recommendation for an Appointment to the Sewer Commission. I don't think they have a recommendation yet.
There was correspondence about the applicant should contact the Ethics Commission, but the appointment has to be made before the Ethics Commission acts on the form, and the form would have to come to the Board of Selectmen for a vote, because the person has to be designated a special employee of the town.
So, we have to wait for their recommendation?
Yes. Yes. Well, the Selectmen and the Commissioners have to meet to appoint somebody.
And then you'll contact the state?
Then the appointee has to get the form off the Internet and fill it out and bring it to the Board of Selectmen.
So, we'll contact the Sewer Commission and ask for a recommendation on their behalf, or sit down with us and we can do it both at the same time, our recommendation and theirs. So, we'll put this on hold. Next on the agenda, Review Discuss an Act Earn Sick Time Benefit. Who would like to speak?
Thanks.
Your number 40, by the way. Forty. That's the number, you're the fortieth person to use that, and you only get one number. So, if you come up here again and speak, you don't get a new number.
Okay. Last year, July 1st of 2015...
Excuse me. Could you give Karen your name for the minutes?
Sharon Reposa. The state enacted a law that was passed by vote concerning earned sick time, and this seven, seven of us are employed at primetime, and we're all part-time employees. We're 19 and a half hours, and there's one that's under that. And because we have no other benefits, we don't get paid for holidays, we don't get any sick time or vacation time or anything like that, this law, we wanted it to be enacted for us so that we could accrue up to 40 hours a year sick time. The question I know that comes up is, how would this be funded? But technically, it, the funds are already there, because we wouldn't be getting extra sick time. It would only be based on the hours that we work. We would have to work 30 hours before we could accrue one hour towards sick time. And when the budget is done for the year through the town, as I understand it, and I could be wrong, but we're, our salaries for the year is based on the fact that we're going to be there every day, so that that salary is what we would still be drawing from. We would, it's no, no extra money would be involved in paying this accrued sick time. It would just be, the time would be accrued, up to 40 hours, and then you would draw from it if you were sick. So, in other words, now, if we're sick, the only way we can get paid for that sick time is to make up that time during that same week. So, if you're sick at home in bed, and you're worried about not getting paid, that you have to get back to work and then work extra hours in those days just to get paid for that one day that you were out, it's a little more strain on you than, you know, forgetting, getting well. I did the math on the hours, and based on our hours of 19 and a half hours a week, the most we could accrue in one year anyway wouldn't be the 40 hours, it would be 33.8 hours that we could accrue. And according to the law, it says that if you had any time left over from that year, you could carry it over to the next year, only up to 40 hours, but not any, you know, any over that. So, basically, I guess what we're asking is for the town to take this into consideration so that we would be able to accrue this sick time, so that it wouldn't, you know, be as much strain on us, you know, trying to make up that time in order to get paid.
What's the total cost to the town?
I, like I said, I, there is no cost, as far as I know, because of...
No, wait a minute. You're only looking at primetime. This is a law that the town meeting would have to accept. Is that correct?
Yes, it says that the town would have to accept unless there is appropriation of already sufficient funds to pay the benefit.
It would affect every person in the town who works less than 20 hours. Not just your group.
Right. We've tried to find out if there are other people, and we haven't been able to find that out.
The other thing is, your department doesn't receive appropriation from the town of Dayton. Isn't it the money that Alice takes in to run the program that pays you?
I don't know, because our checks come from the town of Dayton.
Doesn't matter. It's not in the point.
I believe that's correct.
There's no tax. Our town departments submit budgets, and they're raising appropriate for the most part, except for a couple of, like, one of the public safety departments and sewer department. Funding is different. It's not tax money. Primetime does not receive an appropriation from the town, raise and appropriate tax money. I believe the money that funds your program and your salaries is money that Alice takes in. She has a special account, and she receives money. It doesn't come from raising appropriate at town meeting. We approve her accounts, but we don't put money into it. So, when you say the money is already there, I'm saying it is not raised and appropriate. Now, the rest of the question would be, every person in the town of Dayton who works similar hours, because we have part-time employees or less than 20 hours, I'll put it at that. If the town meeting voted this, everyone would be entitled to it. So, the question is, what's the cost to the town? Because there would be a cost, because those other departments, it would be raised and appropriate, I believe. So, this is what you need to know. In order to bring an article to town meeting and ask people to support it, vote for it, you've got to have the information. People have to know how much money's involved, what's it going to cost, and if you get the cost, you'll know how many people there are. So, you can say there's no cost to the town for you, because money is raised, you know, Alice gets fees for people going there, and she has other sources of funding. It's not like a town budget. Town departments have budgets based on tax money. But we couldn't give it to one group and not give it to every employee. So, that's what you need to determine. If you want to bring this to a town meeting, whether you bring it back to the board or whether you do it by petition, you've got to know what kind of money we're talking about. You can't go to town meeting and ask for this benefit and not let people know there's a cost associated with it.
And how do you go about getting that information?
It's public information.
It is, yes. If I may, the letter that you sent to us, I'm just curious. This letter is dated May 15th, and you respond of 2015. You had asked Representative Pat Hadder to look into this matter. What did she say about it? Did she explain the whole thing to you?
I don't know. Did you get a response?
She said it was up to the town, whether you were going to adopt it or not.
Because I think you came in a couple of years ago, and brought, was it last year? And brought this up. And I know we had did a little research on it. I had gone to our accountant to see exactly the number of people that this would pertain to within this town. And the way this is all described, and I gave this information to our town accountant, any person who performs services for an employee for wage, remuneration, or any other compensation, further defined by Master General Law, Chapter 149, Chapter 148B, including full-time, part-time, seasonal, and temporary employees. That also includes any interns any departments might have. An employee of a city or a town is not considered an employee for purposes of this section until this law is accepted by vote or by appropriation by the town for which the employee works, which would be a town meeting. I went to the town accountant after you first approached us, and there were 53 people that this involved with, that would be involved with this, that presently, or last year when you came in, worked for this town. So, they would be in the same boat as you are. And we ended it there, because once it got to the point of adding up the figures, that it would appear for an appropriation, which is a tax increase to appropriate the money, it just wasn't feasible at all. So, it's not that we deny it, we just have an awful lot of people that if we do it for a group of six, we have to do it for everyone.
The other thing that needs you, let's not, let's set this one aside. Let's assume you're on a board or a committee, and your board wants to purchase something over and above what's in your normal budget. You're a department, and you have employees, so forth and so on. So, you ask to have a special article placed on the town meeting warrant to buy whatever this is. You would come in with a description of what it is you want to buy, the cost for acquiring it, and some kind of a justification, because you'd have to meet with the, the Finance Committee reviews all financial matters, so they go through the budgets for the annual town meeting. But we're coming up with a special town meeting, so there will be a Finance Committee meeting, and they will look to see if there are any adjustments that have to be made to the town's budget that was approved back in June. Then they will go through the list of special articles on the warrant. So, in my example, if you had that article, you would meet with the Finance Committee, and you would be explaining to them what it is you wanted to buy, why you need it. Are you replacing some, an old piece of equipment? Are you trading this one in? You'd be talking costs and all that kind of thing, okay? If it were some kind of a vehicle, there would be an insurance thing involved. If it were some kind of a fixed asset, there would be insurance involved. So, that's all cost information. So, getting back to the article that you're talking about, all right, you would need, well, based on the numbers back in 2015, you would have to have, he said 57 people is what they came up with. There would have to be a cost associated with that. So, if the total cost is X, let's say X is $50,000, we already know from what you said, some of those people, seven, would be primetime. So, you separate those out, and those seven would equal a certain number of dollars. Those are not raised and appropriate dollars. But the Finance Committee would have to know source of funding. So, you would break them out, you would have primetime, and that comes in through Alice's programs, I believe. Then you would have, if there were any other departments that had part-time people, and there was another source of funding, that would be broken out. But the last number, which is probably the biggest number, would be raised and appropriate. And whenever you hear raised and appropriate, it means tax money, okay? So, this is the kind of information that will be required in order for this to be presented. So, this is what you need to look at. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next, under New Business, is the Review Discuss an Act on a Request for a Warrant Article to Increase Administrative Assistance Hours to 40 hours per week. Board of Selectmen, from Administrative Assistant Karen Brady. I am requesting to place the following article on the warrant for the special town meeting. See if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash the amount of $4,600 to additionally fund the Administrative Assistance Salary Account, number 10-0-122-0000-50-5110, in order to increase weekly payroll hours to 40 hours per week. To the Board of Selectmen, Karen Al Brady, Administrative Assistant, Board of Selectmen.
You must be putting in more than that already.
Yeah.
If we do this, are we looking at a fixed salary, like a contract? Are we looking at time and a half over 40 hours?
We still have to pay time and a half.
Unless it's a contract. So, that's what I'm asking. Having, I've worked under both. And the contract means you don't get paid overtime, and you could put in a lot of hours, but you agree to accept whatever the contract amount is. But if it's 40 hours, okay, then, yes, overtime would be paid for the, when you're required to work beyond that, so.
See, one of the considerations, I believe this was brought up, was because of the proposed town administrator coming.
Yep.
That she's going to be asked to split the duties between the two.
Yep.
Right now, she is working overtime just to keep up with the Board of Selectmen. Now, the general, the faults, I would say conception that's out there is that the Board of Selectmen are going to do very little because of the town administrator. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's not the case. Whoever's sitting up here is still going to have a workload to maintain the way the town is run. The town administrator's going to do a lot of legwork and give back to the Selectmen, but the Selectmen still have their plates full. Now, with her being, her duties being split between the two, it's going to be substantial. Rather than hiring another person... Rather than hiring another person, you know, to pay benefits for, for a part-time position, we thought it best at this point to increase it to 40 hours.
I think, as I said, I've worked under both when I was at the school department, and there's definitely gonna be a period of transition. And in all honesty, Karen, you're the only one who's gonna know, when the dust settles and we have a town administrator here, what is the best way to go? So I think for the, I'll call it for the transition period, for the rest of the year, if that's what it is, the rest of the fiscal year, I would move that we approve the 40-hour work week, which means you would be compensated when you have to work overtime.
Right. Because we don't, we can't, we can't predict how this gentleman or lady that may get hired is, is what they're gonna expect out of their administrative assistant either.
Yep.
There's no control over that. So I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I made that motion.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have a discussion? If none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to point out one thing, too. At the June 13th Annual Town Meeting, before the vote was taken on the town administrator, it was discussed publicly that Karen would be spending 20 hours doing Board of Selectmen's administrative duties, as well as 20 hours doing the town administrative duty, administrator duties. So this is actually not, not something new to the public either.
And I can tell you that when I was at the school department, I was a, I had an hourly work week, and I was compensated overtime for every single week for a school committee meeting, because we, every Tuesday night, we had a meeting somewhere, except two weeks out of the year. Couldn't wait for those two weeks. But every single Tuesday night, there was a meeting in Berkeley, Dayton, Rehoboth, Adia. And when the overtime rate, the overtime costs continued to rise, that's when I was offered a contract, which meant I still had to do that over snow overtime. But we had an agreement, and that was that. And so that's why I think it's better to go this route until everything gets straightened out and we know the workload shift. There's going to be days when you're doing more for a town administrator than you are for the Board of Selectmen, and it will go the other direction, too, just like up there. On a given, in a given week, I couldn't say I did the same percentage for each town of the percentage that they paid my salary. It depends on what's in front of you, so.
I just wanted to finish by saying that I think that having Karen split her time between both is the best thing, because there will be a continuity between what the Board of Selectmen, who is guiding the policy, decides, and then what the town administrator does to make sure that it's implemented. I think it's, I think it's the way to go.
And when we get an appointed Board of Health, that'll be another transition, because right now, we still have Board of Health. And there are times that Karen's called on to do Board of Health stuff. So, you know, when Roz is not available, or it's something she worked on before, so it's just easier to ask her to do it again, so, yeah.
Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act, South Coast Rail, new Middleborough option. Do you have anything on that?
We don't.
I'm gonna ask Mrs. Gulart, because I know she was, she's very.
Passionate about this.
And I'll ask my colleague, Mr. Zagras, to jump into this, because he was present also. You've probably read in the Gazette that there was a meeting at Bristol Community College at the Totten Mall a couple of weeks ago, and the topic was South Coast Rail. And I don't know why, but they have a proposal now, everything we all heard was that the most direct route, the route approved by the Army Corps of Engineers, which is no easy approval to acquire on any project, the Army Corps of Engineers had approved the northern route, the direct northern route that goes Fall River and New Bedford would come into Cotley Junction, which is over in the, I'll call it the swamp on the Berkeley line, Berkeley-Totten line. And from there, it would go north with a stop at Arlington Street in town, on Route 44, somewhere near where the Girls Club is. And then it would take a direct route north through Rainham, Easton, and Stoughton. And in Stoughton, it would hit the Providence Line, which is the fastest line, so Northeast A new proposal was presented to us that night that would bring the trains to the Cotley Junction, and then take a right turn for seven and a half miles into Middleborough-Lakeville, which would add, well, they said 15 minutes. Haven't commuted for over 12 years, no, seven and a half miles is not 15 minutes, because it's not high-speed rail. If you were on the Providence Line and you didn't have local stops, yeah, seven and a half miles would be less than 15 minutes. The trains that would be going from Cotley Junction into Middleborough will not be traveling the speed that we see on the Providence, on the Northeast corridor, the Providence Line. In any case, a number of area elected officials, state representatives, state senators, Totten councilmen, the mayor, got up and spoke in opposition to it, because it doesn't make sense. When you looked at the map, the most direct route is due north through the swamp where the railroad used to run, when we did have commuter rail. We had Budliners until they stopped. I think they stopped around the time they built Route 24, because that was gonna be the solution to all the problems. So anyone who travels that route north to 128 knows that solution is certainly no longer effective. I did get up and speak, because the only towns mentioned during the discussion, other than Fall River and New Bedford, were Berkeley, Free Town, and Totten. And so I did address the crowd, because I have concerns that although the town of Dayton doesn't have and will not have South Coast Rail, people in this town commute to Boston, whether they take a bus, they drive in, or they go to the nearest commuter rail station. And it, to me, we're the center of Bristol County. We certainly are a South Coast community, and to not have even a concern about what the people in this town might have for an opinion on South Coast Rail, I figured it was time to speak up, and I did. And again, I supported what the direct route through Totten was originally proposed, was originally approved, and I can't imagine spending more money studying a right turn, detour. And then somebody said, well, a gentleman spoke up, because he just wants this to get going. So he supported the Middleborough, I'll call it right turn, it's a detour, that's what it is, because he wants New Bedford, which would also mean Fall River, Dayton, as soon as possible, and down the road, they can build the northern route. Well, I think that's a total waste of money. Build it correctly the first time. You have got to build it so you're gonna attract ridership, and the only way you're gonna attract ridership is to do it in a direct manner. No one is gonna ride the train and spend additional time on the train. The northern route, I'll call it the northern route, that's the route through the swamp that's been approved. They estimated riders on a daily basis would be approximately 4,800. Now, with the detour to Middleborough, they're saying it's gonna be 2,400. Well, I think that already defeats the purpose, because you're gonna be having that extra time, and people are not gonna do it. If you live in Dayton right now, you have options. You can go to Middleborough-Lakeville, you can go to Attleboro. I used to go out of Mansfield, I still go out of Mansfield when I go to Boston, because Mansfield is the fastest way. From my home, it's, the Mansfield Station is 15 miles. My home to Lakeville is, I believe, I'm guessing 16, but the problem is, it's a lot faster to drive from my home to Mansfield, because for the most part, I'm on state highways, than it is to drive from my home through Berkeley out to Route 79 to get into Middleborough-Lakeville. So anyhow, I did speak in favor of the direct route, to not have two stations in Totten. And by the way, the Cotley Junction Station, it's a junction. It's in the, it's in the swamp area. It's on the Berkeley-Totten line. To give you an idea, you know where Coles is, Target. It's down behind there. That's where Cotley Junction is. So if the train were to take the detour to Middleborough, they would have to relocate what is now Cotley Junction. They would have to build a train station with all the parking and everything else. And if they think they're gonna have all those commuters going to Middleborough, they will build a large area. Now, obviously, if the train goes the direct route, the northern route through the swamp, they will have a train station at Cotley Junction, but their main station in Totten will be at Arlington Street, so that more people will be able to access it. Needless to say, I would not drive to Lakeville or Mansfield if there were a station in Totten. And the other thing they talked about was currently, the Middleborough-Lakeville train starts over there in Middleborough-Lakeville. It is practically a dedicated line until you get closer to Boston, and then the, I think it's the, I'll call it the Green Bush Line comes in. And so to add more trains, now remember, they would be coming from three cities, Fall River, New Bedford, and Totten. Biggest, at least the first two, biggest cities in the county. And that means more trains on that track that exists right now. The northern route, the trains from Middleborough, New Bedford and Fall River would come together at Cotley, go into Totten, there would be a stop, at least one in Rainham, maybe more, but at least one in Rainham, one in Easton, and then they get to Stoughton, and they would get on the Stoughton Line. The Stoughton Line is a short line. It starts in Stoughton and goes out to Canton Junction. When you get to Canton Junction, you're on the Northeast corridor. The other thing about that line is, out in Middleborough-Lakeville, for a good distance, you have a single track, so that in order to move trains, you'll come to areas where there are double tracks, so that they can be moved, controlled, similar to air traffic control, only it's on the ground. The Northeast corridor has three tracks. In the morning, there are two inbound and one outbound, and that reverses in the evening, so that you've got two outbound and one inbound. And one of the things about the Northeast corridor is, it will be able to handle more trains coming in from, well, it'll be Canton Junction, where they will come onto that track, because the system there also controls Acela, which has maximum right-of-way. Acela passes everything. The next train that has priority is Amtrak. Amtrak passes everything except Acela. The next thing is commuter rail. Commuter rail waits for Amtrak and Acela, and the last priority is freight, and freight waits for everything. But you have the control, again, like air traffic control, you have a control center that makes sure that if Acela leaves cell station, first stop is Back Bay, next stop is 128. When Amtrak or Acela leaves 128, it doesn't stop again until it gets to Providence. So rest assured, when they're outbound, if there is traffic ahead of them, that traffic is moved to one of the rails, so they can pass, whether it's inbound or outbound, that's how it is. And the other thing is that coming in from Providence, if there is, and there is, quite frankly, Amtrak and/or Acela, when commuter rail is running, they will come through the station lickety-split, and if there is commuter rail traffic on the line, it moves over. Because again, where there are two tracks available, or three tracks available, this is how they do it. Out in Mansfield, there are two tracks, but it's not unusual to look down the track and see two lights coming towards you, because there is no outbound traffic. And therefore, they can move the inbound traffic that has to get by, the priority train, can pass commuter rail, and then it goes back on that inbound track. This is the kind of controls that are there. This is the kind of service that would be available to, in effect, route traffic on the Northeast corridor. This is nothing new. It's all, it's there, it's always been there. The only thing that came along new was the high-speed Acela train, but the traffic control was there. So in any case, I did speak up, because I want them to know that the long, the little long-forgotten town of Dayton is still in the South Coast. There are still people in this town who commute, and I believe that South Coast Rail, if it's done right, will help this town, because it will make, it'll open up jobs to people to go into Boston, and it's also gonna be, bring people here. If you've ever been in Mansfield, that outbound train in the morning has got passengers. So that's telling me, people are coming out somewhere north of Mansfield, and they're going into Providence or maybe Attleboro, and they're going to work. We also have a lot of students that commute, college students that commute, and it would help college students from Dayton who would be going in. So anyhow, that's my speech on South Coast Rail. I'm a supporter, I'm a supporter of the northern route that goes on the old tracks, the old route, the old bed that used to be Budliners. Brett.
Well, I think you did a very comprehensive summary of exactly how I feel as well. I do wanna say the reasons I do not support the new Middleborough option, as presented by Mass. DOT several weeks ago, and why I prefer, as Selectman Gulart does, the Stoughton option. The first reason, obviously, is as Selectman Gulart said, it's not a direct route, it's a waste of time. You'll have less riders, which means you'll be making less money to make up for the money that will have to be spent to construct the project. The other problem, again, is reduced ridership on the new Middleborough option, as they call it. Another big reason why I'm against the new Middleborough option is simply because, as Selectman Gulart said, they had, Mass. DOT had already received, and all the necessary environmental permits and variances, that was money spent, that was obviously a lot of time invested in that, on top of the studies that they did before it even got to that phase. I just don't wanna see that money go to waste. There will be, there already is in the works, some proposed litigation from various towns, now that they're trying to do the new Middleborough option, so there's that. And ultimately, I feel like there are many people in town who do commute to Boston. I was one of them. Some of my family members and friends also commute from Dayton to Boston. So ultimately, I am for the South Coast Rail-Stoughton option. This new Middleborough option, in my opinion, is not in the best interest of the people of Dayton, certainly not in the best interest of any potential economic development that could be had from a South Coast Rail that services Totten. So I just wanna be on the record as going in opposition to the new Middleborough option from South Coast Rail. And if we wanna vote on it, we'd be happy to do that as well.
I just wanna add that one of the concerns expressed with the northern route, the most direct route, was pollution. The train that's going to run through that section is actually going to be electric. This is a whole new thing. Certainly, an electric train does not generate the kind of smoke or fumes or pollution or whatever else that's normally commuter rail. So they have even taken that into consideration. And no one could answer the question, why is this new route being proposed when you have the direct route already approved by everybody? We never got an answer to that question. So that also makes me wonder.
We'd like to make a motion to have on record this board's consensus of.
I would, I would love to make it. Mr. Chairman, absolutely. I would love to motion that we vote either to approve or be on the record.
Support.
Support or not support South Coast Rail's new Middleborough. Support or not support South Coast Rail's new Middleborough option.
All right, so just a friendly amendment. I think we ought to notify our senator and rep that this board voted to support the Stoughton option. Is that what you want to do? Is that what we said?
Absolutely.
I don't even want to mention Middleborough.
No. Let's do it.
I don't even want to mention it. Because for this town, it's already there. We need something better. So I will second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carries unanimously. Next on the new business review, discuss an act on a nomination form for inspector of animals. And I do realize this is probably a board of health matter, but since we only...
No, she said it had to be the board of selectmen.
Oh, it is a board of selectmen.
Even though she called the board of health.
Nancy, please do.
Each year, the state has to reappoint or appoint new animal inspectors. And our animal inspector is also our ACO. So the town appoints Stacy Ferry as the animal control officer. The town appoints Stacy, animal control officer. She is now up for having her appointment as the inspector of animals for the town of Dayton. But that appointment comes from the Commonwealth Department of Agricultural Resources. So we have a form here for a nomination of inspector of animals. And I move that we approve the nomination of Stacy Ferry for inspector of animals and submit this to the State Department of Agricultural Resources for action.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? I just have one question. What is the term of that?
It's a year.
Is it a calendar year or from the date of the...
Yeah, it varies. It goes from, it's only, even the records, some of the records are calendar year and some records are fiscal year. So that's why the records that are submitted, and they don't correspond appointment day, so...
With that said, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and motion carries unanimously.
I'll put the package together tomorrow, and that can go in with it, Karen. We'll mail it all in.
Mr. Chairman or Selectman Gulart, do we need to sign anything?
No. No, we just have to approve the nomination.
Next on the new business review, discuss an act on a food permit waiver request by the Dayton Lions. We have a request here from the Dayton Lions Club, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in Dayton, for a request that we consider waiving the fee for a food permit for their upcoming event. They are serving food at Pink It Up Dayton on October 2nd, 2016, and would appreciate consideration of this request before that event. I believe that's a Saturday coming.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a motion to okay the waiver of the fee?
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
It's the second? That's a Sunday.
Pink It Up.
Because the 30th is Friday, right?
Yes.
So it's Sunday.
It's actually Sunday, yes.
October 2nd. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, reports. Anybody have any reports that we haven't covered?
Just an update on the Center Street sidewalk project. Today, Roy Delano from John Delano Associates, the engineer we hired, Fire Chief Rodrick, Superintendent Streets Ferry from the Dayton Water District, the superintendent Cahal O'Brien, and Greg Olson, George Matosa from the Aggie School Board of Trustees, Superintendent Director Dempsey, Selectmen Zografis, and I went over to the school to look at the proposed layout for the sidewalk. Of main concern and discussion today was the location of one hydrant in particular. There were actually two hydrants on Aggie property. One will be moved by the Dayton Water District, and that wasn't a problem. The second one is very old, and it's not something you want to disturb because the underground piping is asbestos. So as long as it's underground and you don't disturb it, everything is fine. So the consensus was that the first hydrant will be moved by the Dayton Water District because it doesn't require any special certifications to be able, the pipe there is not asbestos, so that can be done. The other hydrant, that was the one that would be the most troublesome, will stay where it is, and the sidewalk will pass to the south of it. And the next step will be, Mr. Delano expects to have the plans for us within a week. And so for those residents on the south side of Center Street that got letters from us talking about this project and talking about easements that would be needed and rights of entry, once we have that, we will be in touch with you to talk about what has to be done and what land is required for the sidewalk. And once that's all discussed and agreed to and taken care of, the easement drawings will be finalized so that we can record them at the Registry of Deeds and take care of all the legal paperwork that has to occur. The construction of the sidewalk is probably going to be in the spring because, first of all, the late, where we are in the season right now. This project will have to be put out to bid. The Superintendent Streets will have to get approval for the initial project. And then, we're estimating construction will begin in the spring. The Dayton Water District Fields, they may be able to get quite a bit of their work done before then because that way, any work they do will be under the new sidewalk, and they won't have to be dealing with that construction. They can do theirs and have that all taken care of. So for the folks on Center Street that saw all these people out there with those bright yellow vests today, probably thought, "They're back again." That's what was going on, and we will be in touch with you. But the drawings and the engineering and that sort of thing, that's all moving along. The county has already told the town it could have whatever easements it needs. They will be donated, just as they did with the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge project. And we will be in touch with the private property owners about the rest of the project. That's where we are.
Very good. Brett, did you have anything?
No, it was fun. Learned how to read a map. I wasn't that good at it. Learning a lot.
Thank God for GPS instead of...
You said you couldn't read the drawings that Roy Delano had because he says, "I just do GPS."
And I know left, right, up, and back. I don't, north, south, east, and west is tricky.
Next on the agenda, acknowledgements. First one, we have an anonymous donation in the amount of $100 to Primetime. This comes from Sheila New, Assistant Program Manager of Primetime. "We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a very generous donation, the amount of $100. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donations Account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to call." So we have a donation of $100.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation of $100 to Primetime.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. We have a bereavement donations, or donations, to Primetime in the amount of $455. Again, from Primetime Assistant Program Manager Sheila New. "We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received six bereavement donations totaling $455."
That's great. Not because of the bereavement, but the, obviously, the remembrance of the people that passed away and that they were that, when they say charity of your choice, they picked a good one, especially for elderly people. Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the bereavement donations to Primetime in the amount of $455.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries. Next on the agenda, public input.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had some public tonight.
Well, it's, you know, I haven't been here all summer, I've been on some schedule. It's over now. You know, the last couple of months, I've been getting a lot of calls and people talking to me about this police station. You know, I follow you guys, thanks to Brett putting everything on YouTube. I think that's been a tremendous help to everyone, not just myself. But it's just so speedy, I can watch the meetings when I want. And I can fast-forward through a lot of them a lot and get to the point. Some of these meetings have gone on for a long time. Biggest reason a lot of people don't show up.
It wasn't just me. We voted as a group.
You responded to your campaign, and you followed up on it, and you did a fantastic job. I commend you. But as far as the police station goes, everybody in town knows that we need a new police station desperately, and that the men working down there deserve a new police station. That's not a question. But the question is, and everybody keeps coming to me, you know, like I have all the answers, okay? I don't. But I expect you people to have the answers, so at least get that to me or to the town. The project just keeps escalating and escalating. And now, from the last time I read, it's going to go up another 2-point-something million dollars. So really, what the voters are not voting on, what we voted on in the first place when I went to a ballot vote to get the police station. And when they were good intentions to bring the police station to the town, and there was a price tag associated with that vote, okay? The price tag is just about tripled now, and you just keep adding. And I don't think it's fair to the tax pay number one. And I think that the cost now is astronomical, it is very high. And I've been speaking with quite a few people. And the special town meeting coming up October 27th, I'm quite sure that has to pass by a two-thirds majority, am I correct?
I think so.
Yeah. So the best I can figure, from the people I'm talking to, I even talked to a police officer who said he's not in favor of this. Okay, I don't see it passing. So if it doesn't pass, more time has gone by where these poor guys are still sitting in the same situation. I feel bad. I feel bad. You know, and let's say the town agrees to spend $8 million on just a police station. That's...
That $8 million is, I don't know where that came from because it's not there. That's not the number. By the way, there's going to be a public meeting. What's the date of that presentation? This coming Tuesday? The police committee, I'll call it, the building committee.
During the day?
No. It's going to be at the middle school, it's 7:00, 7:50. They're going to have a slide presentation. They're going to explain what has happened since the last thing. They're going to have numbers, they're going to have drawings, they're going to have, they're going to lay out the whole thing. You've probably seen the police, the last committee meeting when they were working on reducing costs.
I wish.
Okay. There is going to be this public information meeting on the fourth, so tell people...
Well, the people need to know this so they can attend. It would be nice if the Gazette could find out about it, and the 22 people in town that get the newspaper can maybe tell their friends. And, you know, social media is a good way to get it out there. Obviously, a lot of people are watching the Selectmen speaking now on YouTube, which is fantastic.
So just to repeat that, folks, Tuesday night, October 4th, 7:00 p.m., Dayton Middle School, there will be a presentation about the proposed Police Station Communications Center building. It will have schematic drawings of the building. It will have, going back to the last time, I'll say it's history. It'll have dollars, it'll talk about costs, it will talk about plans and everything else. So this is an informational meeting prior to the town meeting. So please try to come. If you don't come, watch so that it'll be posted on YouTube.
Oh, it'll be recorded, I'm sure.
They will record, well, the last time we had a town meeting, we had an equipment failure. Hopefully, it will be recorded, and you'll be able to watch it there. And we need to also have it played back on Channel 9. Not to interrupt you. But I've received a number of calls because the Selectmen's meetings are not being shown on Channel 9. So I don't know why that's happening. The live broadcast goes out, but people keep saying, "I can't watch the Selectmen anymore because I don't have a computer," and they're not putting it on. So maybe somebody from cable can address that with us. But anyhow, very important, Tuesday night, 7:00 o'clock, the middle school.
Okay. Just to follow up a little more on that.
It's not 8 million, it's 5.9 is where they are.
Okay, 5.9, and that's with the additional 2-point-something that's going to be put on there?
The amount.
That's total.
That total, 5.9, so it might as well say $6 million.
That includes everything that has come along.
Okay, so let's say that this, let's say it doesn't pass at the annual, I mean, the special town meeting. If that does not pass, we're right back to square one. You know, what I'd like to see at that point is start afresh. Let's come up with a new idea, let's come up with a new plan. And to tell you the truth, I said it from day one. There's probably not much I can do, but I do not like that location because it's very dangerous with that hill. Okay, and I'm going to tell you, and I said it to Brett, a police officer, or worse yet, a family was going to get killed pulling out of that police station. I've seen it happen over here on the hill when I was a little kid, right in front of my father's house. Another bad spot where they put that group home. Right, there was a van pulling out of that group home the other night. Probably never should have allowed that group home to be built there, very dangerous situation. When I was a little kid, we were ahead of my grandmothers on Main Street, and there was a bad accident there, and my grandmother said, "Don't look." And I looked, and there was a guy hanging out of that car with his head missing. You know, because that is a blind hill. You ain't going to see it, it's just going to happen. And I said it before, and I'll say it again on camera so everybody else can hear me. This house next door to Town Hall over here, this antique home that's been for sale a couple of times, that property adjoined this property. It goes way back. If we could buy that house, $250,000, $300,000, it'd be an excellent location, there's water, there's sewage, there's gas, and a box Town Hall. And the land adjoining that is the Philbrook homes, and he owns a lot of land there. But should we buy some off the end?
That's protected land.
You're protected.
You would have to duplicate it. I will tell you this. The, during this last period of working on this project, there were other sites looked at. And we were offered county land just north, in the area of the Philbrook property. It was inspected, it was checked. It's not suitable for building because of the slope of the land and the amount of wetness that's up there. So I know the house you're talking about. It's right near God Broadway. But there were other sites looked at.
That would make that a lot bigger if we could buy that house next door. I don't know why it's never been bought, or why it's never been thought of. I brought it up several times.
It has been talked about. And so, and so has the, has the Philbrook property. But that's when we found out that that land is protected. that land is protected. So if you, if by any chance you've got permission to do it, you've gotta duplicate it.
Right. You know, I'm just saying, if it don't pass on the 27th, it's time to stop, it's time to stop with something else, a new fresh idea.
I don't think, if, if worse comes to worse and it doesn't pass, I don't think we're gonna come in any cheaper because time keeps going and the prices just keep going up, up, up.
Exactly.
All we can consider is take people and collect that money maybe, you know?
My, my other thing is, you keep saying, if it gets voted up, down, then we should start over. Do you, I don't think that's gonna happen. I think if it's voted down, who's gonna decide at the, who's gonna, where, where is the, where is the grassroots support gonna come from for a new project that starts from scratch?
I don't know.
So my fear is...
That's why you're right with the...
And I'm, and I'm telling you my opinion, personal, not the opinion of the board, if it gets voted down, that's it.
I don't see it passing, or do you?
We have...
Myself, and I'm not in favor of it, so.
So, can I ask?
Not in favor of the additional money. I'm in favor of the...
I respect that.
In favor of the additional two point whatever.
I respect that, but, but not being in favor of it is, is basically saying, you want them to stay where they are?
Oh, no, I don't.
Well, they're not, they can't stay where they are.
Soon or later.
We're gonna have to deal with OSHA.
Yeah, well, we've been dealing with OSHA for how long now in the...
We do have a waiver, once we took control of that land and proposed building a, building, and they've just let it alone. But basically, that is condemned.
We're talking about a major tax increase. Oh, yes. A major.
We'll have all those figures, sir.
Yes, we do.
But, but what we could be talking about is a major public safety issue. Because they don't have the facility and the, please correct me if I'm wrong, they don't have appropriate facility and tools to do their job there. So I'm just like, everybody in the building, I know, I know, this is more for everybody.
He supports the station, the price tag is stuck.
Yeah.
All I can say to you is, be there Tuesday night, listen to the presentation, and listen to what has happened with costs or appear time.
And at that, that meeting there, we would expect the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to make a recommendation?
I'm, I can make a recommendation right now, I support it.
You can afford that, Mrs. Gula.
Thank you.
You can afford that, but there's a lot of people in town who can't.
The whole thing.
Okay?
The, the, Woody, I would quite frankly rather have the people in Dyton vote to do it than to have a governmental agency say to this town, "You will do it or else," because that's what happened with sewage in the North End, and the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health at the time, can tell you, they were at the point, because it got voted down and voted down and voted down, they were at the point of being in courthouse in Boston and being told, "You either get this done or the fine is something like $35,000 a day," because this was the federal government, the EPA. It finally came back one more time and it got voted down, but, I mean, it got passed. And so, yes, the bonds were floated, and, and it was the town of Dyton that had to pay the bonds, not the people living in the area affected. The town of Dyton was the, if you will, polluter of the Three Mile River. And the, that's how that came about. The town of Dyton was forced to do it because the alternative was, "You're gonna keep paying fines, but you're gonna do it," similar to what we faced with stormwater.
It sounds like you're gonna like pull the voters' feet to the fire and kind of blackmail them into voting.
No, no, I'm telling, this is a historical statement, this is a historical statement. You can check, well, on the board at the time was Mrs...
I'm talking about the police station now, I, you know...
No, I'm only saying to you, the, having dealt with the federal government, another agency, EPA, with stormwater, I was brand new to the board, I was clueless about stormwater, didn't even know why we got fined, but when I finally got through to the right person at the EPA, I was told, "Yes, the fine this year is $3,000. If you don't have it in," this was December, "if you don't have it in here by March, all approved and everything else, it's $15,000. And it will continue to escalate, and we will continue to fine you until you get it done." So all I'm saying is, having heard Mrs. Santos talk about what they went through, having dealt with on a certainly much smaller fine scale over stormwater, I don't want some of the agency that's kind of out there waiting, and if you don't get it done, they're gonna whack ya, because this is how they operate. We've already had this happen twice. No, I hope it doesn't come to that. I hope, I hope we can get this thing built. The other thing I will say about the location is, I was one of the people who talked about other locations, and people looked at different places, and a decision was made to stay there. The other thing I will point to is that, you gotta remember, that was the Waddell House property. They had direct access to 138, there was no power plant there. You can see where their driveway cut was. And, yes, that's how they entered and exited that property, and the police station driveway is not going to be right at that cut, all right? So I think with the power plant driveway, which has opened up the, the area somewhat, I think when the trees are cut down and the land is actually excavate, excavated, I have trouble saying that, we're going to see, the topography of that land is gonna change. I think that's what's gonna affect the site, the sight line when you're on that road, okay? The other thing we've talked about is having some kind of a signal there, like, for example, in Somerset where the police and fire stations are.
I agree with that.
Now, obviously, that signal is for fire trucks, 'cause the police come out from the side road, but also because that station is right there, another thing that's been discussed is get a, a signal that when the vehicle's coming out, it'll stop traffic. So that's a DOT discussion, but that discussion has been had as far as when plans have been discussed, okay? But, yeah, I, the issues you rave, yeah, they've been raised, yeah.
Yeah, it's a dangerous, very dangerous.
The reason why that road is a one-way road is because five people were killed there in one crash years ago. And the old, the older people like my husband remembered that, and that's when that road became one-way. But again, the hill's gonna be taken down as far as the, the building site, so, but anyhow.
I'm satisfied with that.
You got a list, have you?
He hasn't been here in a while, he's...
Some a list.
The next thing I have is...
Some a list.
I'd like to know what the condition is of the boat that the harbor master has, and why is it on the warrant for a new $40,000 boat? Quite true, that boat has less than $200 on it.
Because of the, the condition of the boat. And by, by the way, it's not a new boat for $40,000.
How much is it?
They'll, it's the boat, the proposed boat is not brand new, it's currently owned by Chatham. It, they're getting a new boat. This boat will have a brand new engine in it with a three-year warranty, completely installed, it comes, in the price tag is the trailer to haul it, and I'm trying to think of what, Boston Whaler?
Yeah, it is.
Yep.
I think, I, I'm not a boat person, so I don't know...
So it's a Boston Whaler with a trail?
Brand new engine.
Brand new, is it not, you know, following them?
Uh, it's in the paperwork that was brought in, I don't have it in front of me.
How many foot bulk do you know?
I'm gonna say 30.
Thirty foot's a big boat. Thirty foot's big.
I think it's 20, 24.
24 foot, so it's gotta have at least 150 or so pounds.
150 or so, something like that.
I know that the, the...
What's wrong with the boat that you're using now then? Let's see, rather than the river, it looks like it runs fine.
The, all the paperwork he brought in explained why they need a new boat. I don't have it in front of me.
The boat works fine, and when he's out there, he's just harassing people, to tell you the truth.
I'm not getting into that.
I don't wanna get into that.
No, thank you.
I don't wanna get into that. I'm sure you've received letters by then.
No, I haven't, as a matter of fact.
No, well, before he got on the boat, it was letters sent by him. The boat runs fine, okay? And before, that job as the harbor master was an honorary position forever, until Mr. Marino took over, you know? And like I said before...
What do you mean by honorary?
Honorary, it was an honor to do it. Now they get paid to do it. It was an honor. Nick Santori took great pride in being the harbor master. The harbor master never...
And Mr. Marino was his assistant.
He did.
And the first time, no, no, let's, let's stick with the story, you brought up Nick Santori. Yes, Nick was the harbor master, and when I came on the finance committee for the first time, Mr. Marino was his assistant. The first time we put any money into that department, and by the way, up until the point that they, he, Mr. Marino came to the finance committee and asked for, I'm gonna guess, it was either $1,500, $2,000, and he had special, had it all, there were no salaries in that, and it was all itemized. But honorary, it wasn't honorary per se, both Nick Santori and Mr. Marino used their own money because there was no appropriation, all right? So, it's nice to say, "I'm the harbor master," but when you start spending your own money for stuff, so when Nick was still harbor master and Mr. Marino was the assistant, he asked about going to the town to get money for things like, now, again, I'm not a seaworthy person, some kind of channel markers and some kind of buoy anchors and whatever those things, whatever's out there.
All the weight of models.
Whatever. And Mr. Marino came to the finance committee and asked if, you know, "Is there any chance of getting this?" And we listened to it and we said, "Yes," because Mr. Santori had said, "You don't have a prayer, we never get anything." Up to that point, as far as I know, that, at least I was not aware that they had asked for anything. So to say it's on, it was honorary, they put their own money into it, and up until...
It was honorary.
Up until, probably, I'm gonna guess, a year ago, or is this the first year, that the salary that was in it?
This year was the first year.
They asked for money a year ago, and the finance committee said no. They came back this year and asked for money, and that's when they approved the stipend that they're getting, all right? But honorary doesn't mean if you hold that honorary position, you should be spending your money for fuel and supplies and stuff for, for something that is truly a town operation.
Right, Nick did it honorary, Nick Santori did it for years, he never asked for any...
That, well, Nick also said that there was no chance of getting, well, they never came to the...
The mentality of that generation...
Never came to the finance committee when I saw it.
Now, the new generation just wants more, more, more.
Okay, what else you got, Mr. Woods?
Okay, I'm just stating the fact, this has to be voted on also $40,000 for a boat we don't need.
I think it's 45, by the way.
45. Folks are not cheap, believe me, I have one, paid for myself.
Why don't you just let us use your boat?
Hey, I'd love to do the job, I'd do it for nothing, and I'd use my own gas, okay? So now I can save $1,500 here and any maintenance on the vehicle, I'll do it for you for nothing.
You never applied for the appointment.
Well, you know...
What else you got, Mr. Woods?
You know something, I probably know a dozen guys that do it for nothing.
I've heard that before.
Doesn't honor you, or nice guys like that.
I've heard that before, okay, what else you got?
What else do I have? I would like to congratulate Jan for getting her 40 hours a week, she's well deserved, she works very hard.
I agree.
He doesn't give compliments, does he?
There's another town for you that, oh, how many people get 40 hours a week? Two? Will she make two, or will she make three?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I only know if...
You got Jan?
Two.
Okay, the town and now gets 40, and now she's gonna get 40, right? More than I want, 40.
I don't think so.
No.
No, I don't think so.
The town's working this town.
No.
I'm ready to work here, okay? I know how things go.
I, I just wanted to say, actually, I've asked around about that. Every person I ask on my life said, "We're happy at 35."
Yeah, that's 'cause they don't want to work Fridays.
I'm just telling you what they said.
Give them all 40, put them to work on Friday, right? This building needs to be open. They complain about space, complaining about the overload of work. Give them all 40, put them to work on Friday.
Well, that can be done, come up with the money, that's raise and appropriate. You don't get somebody to work...
They don't use the spag.
You don't, you don't get, no, no, you don't, because every year it's raise and appropriate. It's what the people approve is what we get to spend. You don't get 35-hour-a-week employees to work another five hours and not pay them. So, yes, all of those five hours, all right, and you pay the going rate, all right?
And you possibly, you know, by opening up their hours, you wouldn't have to hire less downtime employees, but this lady was looking for benefits. The reason we have people working 19 and a half hours or less is so we don't have to give them benefits, right?
Well, you gotta remember also, they are not paid through raise and appropriate. The money that, I believe the money that they are paid is what they take in, that they take in.
The other bottom can be raised and broken.
Yes.
The other 52 people...
Except for, except for the sewer department, which is funded through the enterprise accountant.
But that's the reason we have downtime employees, so we don't have to give them benefits.
Yes, because when you add the insurance, the insurance benefit is a killer, if they take the insurance benefit, so, what else you got?
Oh, I, I...
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Woods, can I ask you a question? I'm just trying to, trying to get into your brain right now.
Uh-oh, take it out.
Correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I don't wanna speak for you. You have a problem with the town paying the harbor master $1,000, am I wrong?
No.
You don't have a problem, you're okay with that?
Fine.
Okay.
Because the town ain't there when the people voted today.
Okay, true.
The only thing that voted at the town meeting, I'm there for it.
But I, but I've heard other people that were questioning why we're paying, why the town is now paying the harbor master $1,000. So where do you think the votes are to raise and appropriate, how, I don't, I can't even think of the number off the top of my head, however much more it's gonna be for everybody in this building to do five hours a week extra, times 40, whatever weeks there are?
Well, you know...
Times however many employees.
And it won't, it won't, in most cases, it won't eliminate overtime because there are certain departments at certain times of the year have to put in the overtime because of either voter registration or elections and town meetings and all those other kind of things. But, but anyhow, by the way, when we say the town, we are talking to townspeople, we are not talking, when we say the town's gonna pay this, the town's gonna pay that.
Yes.
The people of Dyton are going to pay, and by the way, we taxpayers too.
Right.
So when we say the town, we don't mean the Board of Selectmen, we mean the voters at town meeting, and that's another reason why more people should come out to town meetings, as you know.
They should, but they don't.
They call you.
They call me, but they know they're going crazy for it.
Oh, well, I don't...
You can't believe, you can't believe how many people call me, it's crazy.
No, I, I...
They wanna know if I'm running for selectmen, I said, "Don't be a dumb drunk, boys." Right? 'Cause I'll build a wall around there.
Can you do something about the South Coast rail?
Yeah, how's the, how's the rail gonna get in if you're building the wall, Woody?
Then I'll take all the wheels off these guys, and I'll put square wheels on them so they don't have to leave town, and stay right here, go on by here.
What else you got, Woody?
What else do I have? I'll have one last thing.
One, just one, okay.
One left, ten, now.
Okay.
He's got more.
Well, as you know, week after week, we don't have public input, so...
The last thing I have is this podium, this podium.
You want, do you want, have you tried it yet?
I do not, and I do not wanna be counted, because people say, "Why aren't they still counting? That's childish, okay? To count how many people, whoever comes up here, they're number 40 here, I do not want them to be number 41, or 42, or 43."
Hey, it can't be number one.